Welcome Southwest Florida to another edition of Lee Pitts Live. We try to cover the community from gavel to gavel. When we do cover the community in all aspects, we always find one person who comes out to every event to support the youths. We're here at a basketball tournament at Lee High Senior High School that's brought basketball players in from all over the state, high school players, along with coaches to take a look at them and many of them get a chance to get Division I scholarships. And I just looked up in the audience and who did I see supporting the youths? A man who's been supporting the youths since his, all of his adult life. One, Charles Daly. And the great thing about Charles is he's now a candidate for the Lee County School District. And boy, we would love to see him up there deliberating for the people. Uh, Charles Daly, a longtime educator. Charles, what district are you running for?
Uh, thank you, Lee, for having me. I'm in District 1. Uh, and we believe that, uh, change is on its way.
And I'll be remiss and I apologize for this. I should have addressed him in his proper terms. This is Dr. Charles Daly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Charles, man, I tell you, let's go back a little bit in history and go forward. You cut your teeth in the education system? Did you come straight out of college into education?
No, no, Lee. I started off with the then Levis Furniture Company. Spent one year here in Fort Myers, left Florida Memorial College at that time. Came here to work for Levis and, and spent one year and then after that moved straight into, uh, uh, the Lee County School District where I spent over thirty years.
You learn something new every day.
Every day.
Most people think you've been in education from day one, but you spent a year out of education.
I spent a year of education in the business world with Levis Furniture Company.
Let's, let's go back for a minute on that though. So, okay, you're working in the furniture company and how did you get into education?
Well, my degree was in social studies.
Okay.
And, uh, after I finished, I had a professor whose husband was a senior vice president of, of, uh, Levis Furniture. And, uh, his name was Michael Ross.
Okay.
And he gave me the opportunity to step into the business world. But, but education was my passion. It's where I worked with kids, where I worked with parents and, uh, and so I decided at that point to move back into the area. My mother was a teacher, uh, my uncles and so, uh, that's where my passion was. That's where it is and that's what I've been doing for the past thirty years.
Is it a fair thing for me to say that was the best decision you ever made?
Of course. Beyond a shadow of a doubt. I've had the opportunity to turn the lives on for many kids. I'm here today to give four or five scholarships on behalf of Florida Memorial University. Uh, because, uh, I, I believe in, in, there's a hand that reaches down, there's a hand that reaches up and, and I'm not too heavy to pull up. So that's what we want to do.
That's great. Now, then you spent, uh, what would we say, uh, thirty something years in education?
Yes. Thirty, so over thirty years.
What capacities in general?
Uh, I have been, uh, I was a teacher, I was a coach, uh, head girls basketball coach, head girls track coach, assistant football coach. I've been a coordinator, uh, I've been a, uh, director, uh, dean of students and principal. So I've, 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 I've been across the board.
Hey, Charles, if there's a such thing as being qualified or overqualified for a school board job, you, you would fit that, man. Your qualifications are just, uh, superb in terms of, uh, all the aspects of what it takes to, to, to run a school system.
Well, well, we, we've been blessed. To whom much is given, much is required. Uh, I have been blessed to work with one of the best ever, the late Dr. James Adams. And, uh, I work very close with him. So not only have I been working with the school district, but I've worked with the, in the inner circle of making the decisions, how the decisions were made. I was the chairman of the district's equity and diversity committee for over ten years. I was one of the ones, along with Melvin Morgan, who signed the, uh, the court order releasing us, uh, from the, uh, from the lawsuit that, uh, allowed us, allowed the district to become unitary.
Mm-hmm. Right. And now the district can, uh, that was unitary status. I remember, uh, doing some interviews on there back in the day. Unitary status, uh, you were being controlled by the courts?
No, no. Unitary status is that when you come from under control of the courts.
Of course, okay.
And, and, and we were under a federal court order, not only by the NAACP Justice, I mean, NAACP Legal Defense Fund, but we were also under court order, uh, by the United States Justice Department. So we had two, two complaints.
What caused the Lee County School District to get under the court order?
Just failing, just failing to follow the desegregation rules that was established by the United States government and, uh, and just following compliance. And they just did not do it. So, um, uh, under Rosalynn Blaylock, uh, uh, her, her, she, she is savage. I filed a lawsuit on behalf of, uh, against the Lee County School District and that went on for thirty or more years.
I think you said District 1, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What is District 1 or are you, is that, are you running at large?
No.
So you're heavily based Cape Coral?
I'm heavily based in Cape Coral. Cape Coral, we, we believe that my, my opponent has been in her seat for eight years. Time's up with no change. Uh, we believe that, um, that, that they attempted to, without transparency, they, they, they attempted to move forward with a vote on a half percent sales tax that would have cost the district close to a million dollars in, in, uh, April or May. That didn't work. The citizen says no. Then they go and they give the superintendent over a $300,000 total raise. Uh, and now they have the audacity to ask the citizens for a half percent sales tax without fully explaining the, 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 the end result, where the current, uh, loan will be paid off within five years, but they're asking taxpayers to pay it over a ten-year period. Now, Lee, that does not impact the, the higher echelon of the pay scale. But those that are on that lower, that lower pay scale, those that are receiving social security. So when you talk about the higher, one of the board members, Steve Toyber, talks about, well, it's equivalent to that of a cup of coffee from Starbucks. When realistically, from the lower end of it, that means that's an extra glass of milk or extra bowl of cereal, oatmeal, that they won't be getting. That's not fair.
Let me go back and unpack some of this so you can, uh, demystify a few things. One, you talked about the, uh, vote to four or half percent sales tax, right?
Yes.
Okay. Obviously you are against the, the, the sales tax.
Totally, totally.
Okay. Uh, your primary reasons for being against that are?
The primary reason is because we've not been, or the district has not been good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. We've had a lack of oversight, a lack of, of proactive decision-making. Everything we do is reactionary. You know, now they're, now they're looking at wanting to possibly do a resolution that, that voices their, their concern against term limits. Well, when you, when you, when you, when you have, when you don't have term limits, it allows individuals to sit in those seats for eight, twelve, sixteen years and so no change takes place. You have to change with the times.
I see.
And so there's, there's a problem. So why would they want to get rid of it? Because it's the same individuals who are in charge, they're making the same bad decisions. So I feel it's a conflict of interest. One last point. If you want to do, if you want to really be concerned about what the stakeholders feel, then do a climate survey with inside of your district, with inside of the community to find out how they feel. So if you're talking about the Lee County School District at whole, now you got an, now you have input from them.
Okay. So you're big on the transparency and getting the community involved in some of these serious decisions that have to be made?
You have to, Lee, you have to. It's called stakeholder input. It is required. It, it's, it's one of the necessary tools in order to have a successful, uh, system with inside, with inside of your schools.
So, uh, with your background in all of these types of things in education and administrative for the Lee County School District, um, are we, is our school district just winging it?
Well, we, 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 that's a good question. We can do better. Um, uh, we need to, uh, uh, target on, I have three areas. Financial, resource accountability, educational accountability, and system accountability. We, we, we are still lacking in the area of our scores. We should do better. We should be working on curriculum maps with instructional guides that provide the opportunity for teachers to be trained on a full-time basis. All teachers to be trained so we know just where kids are and where they're supposed to be.
Got you. The, um, let's go back to another point that you mentioned. You said that the superintendent, Dr. Atkins, had gotten a salary increase to over $300,000 or additional $300,000?
No, no. He has, his total package now is over $309,000. And, 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 and you can't make a $14 million mistake without not a single board member, not a single board member, but maybe one, who did not write him up and get a raise. Something's wrong with that.
A $14 million mistake, what do you mean?
When we decided to build the Benita School, now mind you, I need to be very clear. I am not opposed to a city having a school with inside of their boundaries. Uh, that's a good thing. But when you have two areas, such as in the south area and in the east, and you build the school and you don't have to because the populations of both are growing and then you build a school on land that you have to purchase when you do not have to purchase the land in the east where you're growing enormously there. So you end up, at the end of the day, you end up with the new school, Benita, opening up with 700 students, a sterile being underutilized, while Eastly High and Riverdale and other middle schools are overcrowded with multiple portals sitting on those campuses. It's not right.
How could something that huge like that, uh, not be anticipated, not be thought through?
Not asking the right questions at the right time. The superintendent meets with construction, uh, with his construction people and, and, and one thing that I can say about the former superintendent, Jim Browder, whenever he would call those people in, the first thing he would say is, "Okay, boys, ladies, where are we with the budget?" If you ask those questions up front, then you don't get hit on the tail end. That's a problem.
You, based on what you're saying, are not happy with the performance of the sitting superintendent of the Lee County School District?
I'm not happy with the performance of the superintendent. I'm not happy with the current board members. Uh, they meet, uh, out of the sunshine. You have a board meeting and then after the board meeting, you go into chambers, lock the door where other citizens are not allowed to hear. That is a violation. Now, they say that, well, the attorney says, "Well, we can do this." But, but they're only talking about, quote, uh, "the temperature in the boardroom." Then they say, "Well, Pinellas does it." No. Well, Pinellas does, they do the meeting after the board meeting, but it is inclusive of stakeholders if they choose to attend with inside of their boardroom. That's the difference. That is a violation. So we have missed on everything that we've done by just not doing the right thing.
When you, when you, um, in listening to you, um, do you consider yourself an outsider? Do you consider yourself, hey, I'm an outsider, I'm not going by the status quo, I'm going in there and telling it like it is and I'm gonna do everything I can to fix what has been, uh, going on for all these years?
Uh-uh. I'm not an outsider. I'm one that, that does the latter. I speak out where I believe that we can improve. One of our, one of, one of our strong, one of our strong mentors throughout all ages, Dr. Martin Luther King says, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." And those that choose not to speak out are just as guilty as the ones who are perpetrating the injustices. We've got to do better.
What are you hearing as you are moving around now on the campaign trail? We're easing close to the primaries on August 28th. You are going to a lot of community meetings, you're out shaking hands, you're talking to the common folk, you're talking to some of the teachers, the principal, the administrators. I know you are because you know all of them. Uh, what, what's the theme that's coming out? What's, what are people concerned about?
Number one, the issue of the, the timing. Now, now let me say this, Lee.
And I want you to address that retention issue too. Seems like we can't retain any teachers here.
Well, that, you know, the, 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 the timing, our timing is bad. Let me say, I don't have a problem with anyone getting a fair salary. I want to be real clear about that. But it's the timing. You go and you give the superintendent and it's, and it's a raise three months before it is time. Why? When, when you're asking for a half a cent sales tax to pull money from individuals and then you go back and you give him a raise. Something's wrong. The retention of students, I mean, the retention of teachers, what we have to do is begin to establish relationships with our relatives. So when, so when new teachers move in here, the, the rents are sky high now. It is, why not be a part of the American dream and say, "Listen, we've got a partnership with relatives here that, that can get you a house." If you begin to focus on stability, the American dream, then the more stable they are in their homes, the more stable they are in the classroom. The more stable they are in the classrooms, the more productive we can do, we can work in terms of student achievement. We've got to begin to concentrate on knowing where kids need to be rather than where teachers think that they should be. The curriculum maps and the instructional guides will do that. That's constant training with teachers. Teachers knowing where kids need to be, kids knowing where they should be, parents knowing where the teachers are trying to take their kids with continuous training and recruitment. And then you're moving what I call in the vertical and horizontal alignment. That means sixth grade teachers are, are working with seventh grade teachers. Seventh grade teachers are working with eighth grade teachers. Math teachers going across are working with English teachers, working with science teachers. Now what you're having is a true vertical and horizontal educational alignment that benefits who? Our children.
If Lee County School District is to realize its, its best potential, its fullest potential, the school district would look like what in terms of how the students are performing on their standardized tests, in terms of the diversity at the administrative level, that, at the teaching level, in terms of the diversity in the schools, in terms of cultural diversity in general? If the, the school district was, uh, to realize its full potential, what would all of that look like?
A world-class system. Because it is inclusive of all and all means all. You're a banker, Lee. You're a banker.
I'm a TV guy.
You're, you're a banker, you're a TV guy, okay? When you go into the-
I'm a swim instructor too.
When you go into the bank, you, you don't see just one set of people. You see a combination of a reflection, a wide range. Your customers feel good because they put money in the bank. We have to do, we have to assemble that same kind of image and, and, and we're not doing that.
And I think what you're saying too is even more impactful. For example, our customers are primarily grown people, right?
Yes.
In that school district, we're, those customers are not grown people, which makes it even more impactful. Elaborate.
Well, see what happens is if, when you are talking about, um, inclusion, um, that, that can go academically, that can go across the board. Uh, inclusion means bringing students and including them in all various areas of, um, of the subject matter, helping them to get to the next level. You're talking about inclusion at the hiring level, um, hiring individuals that, that meet the needs, that meet the qualifications, that may not look like you, may not look like me, but across the board. We're talking about supervisor positions from the cafeteria, from maintenance, all the way across the board. It should be a total, total effort of inclusion and we can do better than that.
At the top, at the tip, tip-top in the administration of the Lee County School District, and you and I have talked about this over the years, but we're talking about it even more since you were running for the Lee County School District. There is lack of diversity. The school district board itself, for over a hundred years and still to this day, has not had a person of color, particularly African-American, on their school district board. What, what, what are we to make of that?
I, I tend not to get into, uh, Lee, to the, to the black and white piece. I'm a qualified educator. I just happen to be black.
I'm not talking about Jewish specific, I'm talking about in general.
I, I, I-
I want to make them broader.
I, 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 I think, I think what we need to do is that, 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 we are getting there now.
Okay.
We're hoping that this election will provide an opportunity for, for, of hope and, 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 and the future. The momentum is growing in that area. Uh, two years when I ran, we only had one or two, uh, running. Now we've got a host of, of individuals that are running.
Of color.
I'm, 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 I'm very proud of that. I think we, we're a part of that. Um, uh, and, and I don't care if you're blue, green, or orange, if you're going to meet those qualifications that I have listed. Equity, fairness, justice, then that's who we need to be, that's what we need to be about.
You go to sleep at night, every night, uh, while you're campaigning. Do you feel that that particular day, you put in the hard day's work? I see you everywhere. I mean, you seem like you're working 24/7. You're taking this extremely seriously.
I believe that at the end of the day in August, that when I'm elected, people will say, "This man, years from now, was the best school board member that we ever had. He provided the opportunity of hope." And, and, and that, and that comes out in my passion, in my belief system. And I, and I, and, and, and people sense that, they feel that. I have been endorsed by, by the mayor of Fort Myers, Randy Henderson. I've been endorsed by the, uh, state legislator, Dane Eagle. I've been endorsed by the state legislator, Ray Rodriguez. I've been endorsed by, uh, state legislator, Matt Caldwell. I've been endorsed by the Lee County Republican Party because I am a Republican. Uh, I have been endorsed by-
He's a Republican.
By, I've been endorsed by the former chief of police, Arnold Gibbs, and a whole host of us. We'd be here all day long talking about those.
But we can capitalize this, or one way that I want to capitalize this, is that your appeal as a candidate has crossed over. You have all types of people who are supporting you, all demographics, all ages, ranges, and races. That is the formula to actually be progressive and make things happen. Do you agree?
You just asked, you know, you asked me a question prior to that, what makes it? And I said, being, having, being inclusive and including everyone. And our campaign has done that. You have mentioned that, you have brought that important fact out. It is a combination of, 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 of input from across the district. Being able to clearly hear and listen to the stakeholders. And that's what we tried to do and that's what I will continue to do.
Now let me personalize it before I wrap it up. I've seen you at least 25 years at what you do. From the time I arrived to this area about 27 years ago, from the time I met you, you were always working for the children and for the people. Uh, a common touch, uh, in the community. You walk down the street, everybody knows Charles Daly. Uh, and everybody greets you with a smile and you greet them with that hearty handshake and smile. You're a deeply religious man along the way. You haven't forgotten that part of your component. And, and what I always will say about you is that even, I, I, you're so- Hey, Charles, let me, let me tell these people this story as we wrap this up. You're so personable. So I walk into your high school, one, one of your high school where you were the principal, right? I glance in your office, I wave at you. I hope that people don't say that this is lax on security. I wave at you, you were busy in a meeting. I went into the auditorium. You come in the auditorium, "What's up, Lee?" I say, "I came to, to see about some stuff in here." And then you and I started talking and the next thing you know, we were able to do some partnership stuff to bring the community to the auditorium for a movie and everything else. But the cool part is, I don't think that in the high school, I feel so comfortable with the principal that I can walk in and wave at his office, "You know me, I know you." And then we could get some things done to benefit the community.
It's all a part of getting things done with community. We all work together. I knew your heart, I knew your compassion.
You look like what Lee Pitts doing here?
No, no, no. I knew what Lee Pitts was doing here because if he was here, it's about helping kids.
That's right.
Okay.
And man, that thing worked out just fine, man.
Yes, we did.
And I think that, uh, that, on a serious chip, that is what I want the viewing audience to know, the TV audience, the radio audience, people who are looking at this on social media, all you are looking at this all over. That lets, that, that is an example how Charles will have an open-door policy and his, uh, ears and his eyes will be open to your concern. Speak to that.
You know, I plan to hold monthly meetings across, across my district, being able to hear concerns. I plan to meet with our Realtors Association, finding out what their, their constituency is, is thinking about because it helps me to be a board member. I plan, I want to meet with kids. I want to go into schools, uh, and, 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 and walk around and see, and, and see the things that are happening. I believe in, in, in inclusion at its best.
Now, Charles, we're panning the auditorium now. Uh, you just happened to be here to support these youths in this basketball tournament. You, uh, even you found time in your campaigning to come out and support what's going on with the kids?
I, I, I received in 2015, um, uh, I was, I, I was confirmed with the honorary doctor from Florida Memorial College. I came here today, I just met with a parent who talked with the vice president. I came here today, I sent three kids down, four kids down for scholarships.
Wow.
I came down to give two or three of these, in, two or three of these young men, scholarships to go to school coming up. That's why I'm here.
Mm-hmm. And today, you were walking around before you came here, door to door, greeting people, continuing to press the flesh and sit down and talk to the, to the people.
That's what you have to do, Lee. That's what you have to do.
The old-fashioned way.
That's the old-fashioned way. And besides that, I am who I am.
My man. Everybody, Lee Pitts supports Charles Daly and you should too. I know you guys have never heard me say this on television. I always try to keep it straight, down the middle. In this particular case, I can't go straight down the middle. I know this man personally. He's my mentor, he's my brother, and he would be the best person that we could elect for the District 1, for the Lee County School District. Go out and vote in the primary. Go early. Now I think people can get absentee stuff right now.
The absentee ballot. We just knocked on, well, I called in my grandson, my, my late fraternity brother Nelson Lewis, his youngest son and his wife. We just knocked over close to 50 doors this, uh, this morning. Passing the word.
A man of kappa, alpha, psi, a man of five, beta, six.
Working together.
Working together. And we got our young man right here who's coming out. Charles, I'm gonna give you, uh, Charles, I want you to get right there. Stay right there, stay right. Come on, come on, come on. Come on, let's see your nephew. Get him on TV. Tell us who that is. Bend down so he can get on TV. Bend down.
This is Caleb Lewis.
Caleb, I think you'll have to lean in a little bit because of where you got to focus.
This is, this is Caleb Lewis. Uh, he is the son of my late fraternity brother Nelson Lewis, who was committed with the Little League in, uh, in the Dunbar. And he, uh, I call him my, my young grand, my young grandson.
Good, man.
He's been out working with me today.
And he's been helping me out, man.
He's been helping you out.
And, uh, you know what? He's deep into the map. I already talked to him. I already interviewed him.
Yeah, yeah.
I told him to hit that map, that STEM program.
He's a fine young man.
All right, going back behind camera because we're gonna wrap it up. Charles, um, I want to hit on one final thing before we go. Uh, how would you evaluate, uh, what's your thought process on how our security system is at our school now?
Great question.
Been a lot of talk around security at the schools.
Great question.
You've been in and out, you know all the nooks and crannies. Um, are we safe?
Uh, I, I think that, let me say this by saying, um, for that individual to get into the Broward system, he was able to get inside. We must develop systems that, that don't-
Parkland school shooting people.
That, that don't allow those-
Just outside of Fort Lauderdale.
That don't allow those individuals to get on the inside. So therefore, our, our emphasis, our strengths must be on single-door entrance. We should not be letting individuals in. It, it's, it's very difficult to stop the, the thinking of an irrational person once they get that in their mind. But what you can do, you can limit the danger from the inside where the law enforcement officers can deal with it from the outside. If our security says, "We need $2 million for security," it should not be a debate. I've had the un, the, the, the misfortune of bearing 21 students in my, in my days.
Really?
Uh, in, in my days as an administrator. And, and what is more hurting is to see a mother looking over and a child not looking back. And, and, or, or a- And or a teacher that has been in that position. You have to remember, when Dr. Adams was killed, years and years ago, it was free. You walked in the building, you walked out. But after he was assassinated, then we began to come up with these measures of single entry and not letting them in. Why do we have to be reactionary when we can be proactive? If they ask for 10 million, give it to them, because it's going to save the lives of kids and staff.
Back to the original question. Is the Lee County School District safe in your view? Okay. Or you want to give, let's give it a measurement from A to F, F being the worst. Where does it kind of fall right now in terms of security?
Let me say this. I've not been in the schools to determine, to give you a total assessment. But my talking with individuals across the district, I do know, and visiting schools as an advanced ed evaluator and a lead evaluator, I do know that we have an issue with single, single point, single, single point entry. We need to do better than that. We can do better than that. We can't just run wires in the building and hope that it'll be fixed. We've got to be proactive and complete the projects. We've got to embrace and listen to our security persons who are experts. We've got to embrace the recommendations from our sheriff's department and our local law enforcement agencies. We have to do everything feasibly possible in order to make sure that we are providing a safe and orderly environment. If you do that, achievement increases, and kids feel good, and they feel safe.
Parents as well, the teachers as well.
Yes.
The District One, Cape Coral?
Yes.
When you think District One, think Cape Coral.
Think Cape Coral. Pine Island, Sanibel, and part of North Cape.
Okay. And people can get in touch with you how? Find out more about your campaign how? I see you on social media now, man. You're actually saying something too. On Facebook, you're actually doing something. You used to just look at it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, you got on me long enough about doing it, Lee.
And you're working it too.
Yeah, we have gone out, we are advertising on Comcast. We're advertising on Telemundo. We have to reach. Inclusive means everybody. So we have to span out, and we have to reach. We are sending out letters of information. My website for my campaign is charlesdalyfordistrictone, L C S B dot com. And my phone number is 239-980-3082. My email address for me is charles.b.daly@gmail.com. I need your support. I'm asking for your support. Help me make a change in this district that is so vitally needed.
Charles, I'm going to step away for about 30 seconds. I want you to look into that camera and talk to the people.
I think now's the time that the, that change can-